Good evening, everybody. We are right at seven o'clock and I see we've got a quorum of council available. So I will call tonight's city council meeting to order. Karen, could we have a roll call, please?
Council member Husnick?
Here.
Council member Munson?
Here.
Council member Beistrum?
Here.
Council member Valento?
Here.
And Mayor Bain?
Here. I'd like to invite everybody to join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. If we could have the flag displayed and if you'd like to shut off your camera, you can do so on the bottom left of your Zoom tray. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Council, we have an agenda before you this evening. I will entertain a motion to approve or any changes.
And I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
A second. A motion from council member Beistrum and a second from council member Munson. Karen, could we have a roll call, please?
Council member Husnick?
Aye.
Council member Munson?
Aye.
Council member Beistrum?
Aye.
Council member Valento?
Aye.
And Mayor Bain?
Aye. Agenda is approved. Our next item this evening is open forum. Open forum is any stakeholders' opportunity to speak to council on any topic of their choosing. Karen, do we have anybody in person for open forum this evening or anything that's been submitted? I do know we have a couple of guests for upcoming agenda items and there is a public hearing as part of the the conduit financing, which is our first regular agenda item. So anything related to those can wait. Is there anybody for open forum this evening, however?
Yeah, I don't have anything.
All right. With that, we will move on to our consent agenda. Consent agenda this evening is item six A through six H. And happy to entertain any emotion or any changes. Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda, agenda items six A through six H.
I'll second.
A motion from council member Munson and a second from council member Husnick. And Karen, could we have a roll call, please?
Council member Husnick?
Aye.
Council member Munson?
Aye.
Council member Beistrum?
Aye.
Council member Valento?
Aye.
And Mayor Bain?
Aye. Consent agenda is approved. Our next item this evening on the regular agenda is resolution zero five one zero two one zero one, which is conduit charter school lease revenue refunding bonds for North Lakes Academy. And Sandy, I believe you're kicking us off for this discussion. Is that right?
Yes, actually Patrick is, is going to be sitting then on the open forum or piece of it, the public hearing piece of it. And we have all kinds of guests available for questions as well. But what this is, is the conduit financing between North Lakes Academy and the city to provide the charter school, the ability to do a thirty five million dollar project on their schools. So if there's any other additional information, we certainly have plenty of individuals here that can help answer those questions.
Thank you. And Patrick, any additional comments that you'd like to make related to the conduit financing before we open up for open forum or the public hearing?
No, the city has participated in the past in using its conduit financing powers to, to assist the local schools. As you know, the city policy, there is policy that the city does have that they get paid a certain amount percentage of the conduit financing. It's a little bit different here. The policy states that we only get, if they refinance the bonds under conduit financing that we already used for condo finance conduit financing, we only get the new, if there's more money, the new part, the fee on the new part of the money. But other than that, it's pretty straightforward. And it doesn't affect our bond rating, it doesn't affect anything except our bank qualification, which we've addressed to the council before, but that's not a significant impact on the city.
Very good. Thank you. And I'll just note that this topic has been an item of previous council workshops and discussions. And so if our conversation tonight is a little bit more abbreviated, I would reference those previous discussions. There is a public hearing that is required as part of our process this evening. And before I open up for public hearing, I guess I would just ask council if there's any questions that you have that you'd like staff to address at this point. And there was obviously opportunity for questions after the public hearing as well, but just wanted to give that opportunity before we open up public hearing. Council member Beistrum?
Um, Administrator Casey, can you just remind us, there is no risk to the city with it this, other than the slight impact on our, on our bank account, there is no risk that we need to be concerned, concerned.
And as the terminology says, we're a conduit, we are not the holders of the bond, we're not responsible for the payments of the bond. We only use the statutory power that the city has to sell these, to have the school district, the school, I should say, be able to sell these bonds at a little bit more favorable rate. And yes, we, there's no impact on any of the bond ratings or anything like that. The only difference is that we will not be bank qualified if we do any more borrowing this year. The bank qualification number is ten million dollars or over, under, I should say. But we've, and the policy also addresses that, that if we decide to do any bonding this year, that there's been a, an escrow account reserved to pay any of that bonding amounts that we lose for bank qualification. So that's yet to be determined. That's for a council decision to come later in the year.
Thank you.
Council members, any other questions for staff before we open up to public hearing? And again, we'll have opportunity for discussion and questions afterwards as well. All right, not seeing any additional council questions. We will open up our public hearing this evening. Karen, do you have anybody that is in queue already that would like to speak on the public hearing? And otherwise, I would ask anyone either present to just speak up or if you're in Zoom, you can also raise your hand to be called upon and pulled into the public hearing.
Mayor Bain, I don't have anybody waiting.
All right, we'll wait just a few moments here.
Mayor Bain, there is, we have the doors open and the council chamber open. There is nobody in the council chamber to comment on this item as well.
All right, thank you. We'll hold for just a few more minutes. Anybody else that would like to speak on the public hearing related to the conduit charter school financing bonds? And not hearing anything or seeing anyone, we will close tonight's public hearing. I will open up to the, I know we've got a number of representatives from, number of representatives from North Lakes Academy here. And I know you've also had an opportunity previously to speak to council, but just wanted to give an opportunity, if you wanted to say anything further this evening, anything else you'd like us to consider?
Good evening, thank you Mayor Bain and the council. My name's Cam Stotler, I'm the director at North Lakes Academy. And I think you have all the information in front of you and we've had some discussions about this before. So really, I just want to take an opportunity to thank you for considering this and for supporting the schools in the area. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, but I do think you have everything in front of you and I will just stand aside.
Thank you so much. Open it up, members of council, any questions you have either of staff or to North Lakes Academy staff that are here tonight? All right, not hearing any, if anyone's ready for a motion, I'm happy to entertain resolution zero five one zero two one zero one in your packet.
Mayor Bain, I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number zero five dash one zero dash two one dash zero one, authorizing the issuance of conduit charter school lease revenue refunding bonds for the North Lakes Academy project under Minnesota statutes, section four six nine dot one five two through four six nine dot one six five five and approving related documents.
And I'll second it.
With a motion from council member Beistrum and a second from council member Husnick. Any further discussion or questions this evening? And hearing none, Karen, could we have a roll call, please?
Council member Husnick?
Aye.
Council member Munson?
Aye.
Council member Beistrum?
Aye.
Council member Valento?
Aye.
And Mayor Bain?
Hi, motions approved. Thank you for being here this evening, members of North Lakes Academy and good luck with your project. All right, we will move on to our next item this evening, which is item seven B, which is resolution zero five one zero two one zero two, which is the extension of the emergency declaration. Council, we have approved a number of these through, throughout the past year. And before us is a, the extension of that. And staff and our city attorney put together a memo suggesting, kind of suggested language for the extension and also providing for some consideration of resuming in-person meetings if we so chose to go down that path. Pete, I will turn it over to you to take it from here.
Thank you, Your Honor. Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm very happy to note at the beginning of this that we actually have something to talk about tonight and it's not an obvious, we need to keep a new emergency footing. I think we're now at a point where council maybe wanted to be talking about three options. One is ending the emergency altogether. Second is continuing exactly as we have been. And the third is continuing the emergency powers while returning to in-person meetings. Those don't have to be on the same track at all. In fact, many cities have made rather extraordinary physical changes to their council chambers, et cetera, to have in-person meetings throughout the emergency. And so the staff recommendation is to continue everything for one more month. But this isn't our call, but let me, if I could lay out the reasoning. The governor has made clear in his most recent pronouncements that we are very near the end. We get to seventy percent adults vaccinated and there's no more mask requirement. But the same time that the public health officials are telling us how close the end is, they are telling us to be vigilant and to be careful not to race to the end. And one of the concerns that I have, for what it's worth, is under the open meeting law, if you return to in-person meetings, none of the council members, none of the planning commission members, EDA members, et cetera, have any choice about whether or not they're going to attend those meetings in person. You must do that unless you have a doctor's reason for quarantining. Everyone else, including staff, including myself, we can, we can come in hybrid style thanks to the tech that Dan has gotten in place for you. And if you continue for just one more month, there's every, every likelihood that everyone who wants a vaccination will have it. And then we have less concern about putting people in a, in a position where they have to come to the meeting, face concerns about their health or violate the open meeting law. So obviously, the conservative attorney is sort of putting his thumb on the scale of, it's just one more month and then maybe all this is behind us. But these are policy calls. If you do return in person, you have still to require masks in, in chambers, except when you're speaking. That's the way these meetings are conducted in person. Now everyone is masked, but when it's your turn to speak, you can take your mask off and talk to the camera, to the microphone without, without that, that problem. You'll need social distancing and capacity limits in the chambers. If you wish to end the emergency, the other thing that council needs to consider is what flexibility has the council taken advantage of to help its, its businesses and its citizens using its emergency powers that will evaporate whenever the emergency declaration expires? And we'll want to make sure to put the city on a footing to continue anything that it wants to continue through some sort of interim ordinance or an ordinance with, you know, a sunset on it or let everything go. So those are, the point is you have all three options on the table. The conservative attorney is not comfortable being the one to say, all of you need to show up in person in council chambers. But that's what the open meeting law says, if you, if you go back in person. So you're all fully informed, you can make your decisions. I do think we need some lead time if you want to end the emergency for us to get in place any interim ordinances that you want. We can get them to the next meeting, but we need to, we need to get at least that far.
Thank you, Pete. And we'll open it up, council, questions, comments, thoughts? I'm interested in your, hearing your opinions and where, where you are on this topic. Council member Husnick?
I just see, Madam Mayor, it just seems like another month isn't a big deal about continuing on what we're doing. And it just seems like it might be on the safe side and easier for everybody just to be able to continue on. And the urgency powers, one, one of the things that Pete brought up with, that still gives us the opportunity to help people along the way in case something comes up at the last minute. So my opinion, for what it's worth, I think we should continue the urgency powers for another month.
Thank you, Council member Husnick. Council member Beistrum, go ahead and council member Munson right after.
I tend to agree with council member Husnick. One more month, we're that much closer to potentially being able to be in chambers without masks on at all. And, and I think more importantly, you know, the importance of ensuring that some of the conditions that we've put in place to help our businesses and, and other entities in our community succeed can remain in place for a period of time or at least until, I mean, I think about the outdoor patios, for example, and I know folks aren't necessarily a hundred percent comfortable moving indoors quite yet. And so it's nice for them to be able to have that available to them so that they can continue to, you know, build the confidence of their customers while they're transitioning back as well. So I tend to agree with council member Husnick. A month, a month isn't, isn't anything in the big picture.
Council member Munson? I guess I would just ditto what they said. And council member Valento, anything you'd like to weigh in on or add?
I agree as well. I like what Pete said, let's not race to the finish. It's only a month and it'll fly by.
Thank you for all of that. So I came into this meeting, certainly interested to hear what my fellow council members thought on this topic. This is a team effort for sure. I, I was more of the opinion of allowing for in-person meetings to resume. So a, a hybrid approach of keeping the emergency declaration in place, but adding language that would allow for the resumption of in-person meetings. What weighs on me, we've, I've, we've heard a lot of very enthusiastic feedback in the last EDA meeting on the downtown committee meeting that is expected to kick off here at the end of this month. And there is a, seems to be a pretty sizable desire on the part of that group for that to be an in-person meeting rather than remote. Now, in the grand scheme of things, that is a long project and delaying that in-person interaction for another month certainly doesn't put, that is not, that, that does not put that project in jeopardy at all. It can still be successful. I have also heard pretty enthusiastic feedback on the part of some Parks, Trails and Lakes Commission members as well as planning commission members online to get back to in-person meetings. And so I appreciate that there is that desire. But again, one month does not make a huge, huge difference in my opinion. I also will say one thing that's been important to me is the effectiveness of a meeting. And I am concerned about the effectiveness of a meeting wearing masks in person because we do not have this face-to-face interaction if we are doing that. I am hearing impaired and the, the challenges that that presents is significant. And so that also weighs on me. I do think that if we're looking at the end of the emergency orders in the near term, I do think that we might want to consider some interim ordinances to allow for this gap time or this interim time where we are looking at, what are some of those allowances that we have been able to give to businesses? In particular, the patio space? And is there some sort of a bridge ordinance that we could put in place that says, we as a city of Forest Lake are continuing to, not under the emergency orders, but under a ordinance, an interim ordinance that we might consider that would allow for this interim transition period, recognizing this is an unusual point in time? I would suggest if we're going to head down that path, that we consider something that has some sort of a sunset provision in it? That maybe says through this patio season and to be reconsidered by council next summer or whatever the appropriate language would be. But would allow for us to continue for this interim transition period, recognizing that the emergency orders might appropriately expire before we're ready to go a hundred percent back to ordinary course of business. I think there's some ordinance guidelines that staff would need to prepare for that. And so I want to give them lead time to do that. So I want a council's opinion. I think Pete, you had your hand up, go ahead.
Thank you, Your Honor. I, taking your lead on preparing for sort of standing down from the emergency and standing up whatever else we want to have continue for a bit. If you have some general direction in the context of deciding whether to continue the emergency, I think we're hearing it and I would suggest that staff and I start working a little bit on what are the things that you might want to talk about? And then I would, I would advise workshopping this on Monday next week to decide, have a full discussion. We don't have a discussion of this on the agenda tonight. And so within the confines of whether we're not, whether or not we're advancing the emergency declaration, it definitely queues up this subject and that's fair. I think we've got a pretty good sense that we have some work to do pretty much right now to prepare for a workshop on Monday. And then, so we can be queued up, ready to go at the next meeting, but a full council discussion and a work session, if you have space in that agenda.
Sure.
Council member Husnick?
Yeah, my, my, my thought in this whole thing was, I kind of boiled it down to the fact we're talking about two or three meetings at the council level. That's racing what it amounts to. And as far as the patio things are concerned, I think they should be permanent. They should be able to have a patio business anytime they want, you know what I mean? So if, if that takes an ordinance, I'd be willing to be part of that vote, certainly.
So I suspect we may hear some right away concerns and there might be some other things that might need to be considered as part of making that more, a more permanent position. But yeah, I, I'm, I would love to hear more from staff's perspective, maybe next weekend, that workshop on what are we continuing to use those executive powers and that emergency power for? And how might we have some interim bridge ordinance to transition back into what is going to be new normal here?
Yeah.
And I guess I would ask the question, you know, is there a way to potentially poll the businesses that are utilizing that, you know? Do they want it? Do they need it? You know, that may help us make a better informed decision as well. You know, I just know kind of, you know, conversations with members of the community. Not everybody's comfortable going back indoors quite yet, but they are willing to sit on a patio. So, um, you know, so the more information that we can gather, I think in preparation for that workshop, it would be helpful from my perspective.
Agree. Council member Husnick?
Madam Mayor, you ready for a motion?
If you're ready to make one, sure.
I'll make a motion that we adopt resolution zero five dash one zero dash two one dash zero two, the extension of the emergency declaration.
I'll second.
We have a motion from council member Husnick and a second from council member Valento. Any further discussion on this topic? Hearing none, Karen, could we have a roll call, please?
Council member Husnick?
Aye.
Council member Munson?
Aye.
Council member Beistrum?
Aye.
Council member Valento?
Aye.
Bless you. One more.
And Mayor Bain?
Aye.
Sorry.
Motion, motions approved. Our next item this evening, North Shore Circle Street and Utility Project Authorized Plans and Specifications. Ryan?
Good evening, Mayor, City and Council. Tonight, we're here to request authorization of preparation of plans and specifications for the North Shore Circle Street Utility Project. So this project evolved back after scoping of the original seventeen eighteen lift station project back in two thousand and sixteen. So we originally, we were going to just replace as is lift station five T and six T that are in this vicinity. But then it was also discovered the number of issues with all, all the lateral sanitary sewer lines, such as we would pop one lid, it would be full of liquid, which means there was some issues going on, right? Because then the next one downstream, we would pop and it was dry. Then we popped the next manhole and it was, had liquid in again and the next one was dry. Just, it showed that there were a lot of sags in the line, so did some further investigation with televised and found that to be true. And then there's also a number of services in this area that range anywhere from two to not even five feet of cover. So oftentimes in the winter, they're throwing hay on top of the service area and then so the snow will come on top of it for extra insulation. But when we scoped this out back in sixteen and started planning, we pulled the two lift station replacements out and added into other lift stations that we knew we would continue to utilize long-term for the city. But if we came back with a better scope project at this time period, we would be able to eliminate the two lift stations and replace it with one. So we would relay the gravity sanitary sewer to a, to the north and then just continue the gravity down Hayward into the new lift station. So therefore, we basically cut our operation and maintenance in half by going from two, two lift stations here to one and then fixing all the lateral piping that needed to be fixed. We waited till this time period because, you know, then obviously the conditions of everything would be older. But then we also know we needed more additional funding coming out of the sanitary sewers. So this is why we plan accordingly. Where the budget is set up is one point one million would come from the sewer enterprise fund and then one million comes from our street project, the finances project. And then also why we're coming so early in this specific project is because this is going to take a lot of coordination to get from tonight to approving plans and specifications. I will have to come through and do a full topographic survey in this area. Design is going to be very difficult and critical with the watershed through this area. We'll have to have several probably onsite walkthroughs with the watershed on where we can and can, you know, meet our stormwater requirements is obviously, you know, this land's pretty low in level to the lake. So our ground to water table separation is very narrow. So there's just going to be a lot of, a lot of attributes into this project that don't typically arise in a lot of the other straightforward projects that we've had in the city. So with that, obviously I'm expecting some questions, but we're here tonight for the city council to authorize preparation of plans and specifications for the North Shore Circle Street Utility Project.
Thank you, Ryan. Council questions we might have for Ryan? Ryan, just, so just to confirm, the actual project is expected to be a twenty twenty-two project, is that right?
Yes, we would do majority of the construction because we're also, another reason we separated this out of our, say, our local street project, that'll be going on next year, it just won't be as big, is because this is a lot of pipe work in this project instead of just all street work. So obviously, it's going to take a different type of contractor that's normally doing our local street projects. But knowing that if we have this project, get this, even the size it is, it was, it qualified for that INI grants application that we've submitted already too. So even at a minimum, we already know we've gotten fifty thousand dollars for that grant. We're now banking on other communities don't submit. And so the rest of that pie, that money becomes more available for all the projects we've submitted within it. So the lift station projects that we were talking about next, plus this North Shore, with you get full credit on pipe replacement. And then our sewer lining project, that's almost, our plans are almost done, that would be bringing. So strategically is, that's another reason we broke it out because with that grants, you know, you do have other requirements within a, a project too. But this is going to take a specialty type of utility contractor to lead a project like this versus just a street paving contractor because of the, the difficulty of the pipe work on this one.
Are you, this is a really compressed street and the neighborhoods are really close, close together. We're just talking about really tight spaces. What are you expecting as far as like resident engagement, notification, communication? How do we, how do we help with communications on that on, once the project becomes a little bit? Once the project becomes a little bit more known and I, I just have a sense this one is maybe higher on the disruption scale? Or actually, maybe that's a good question for you. Where, where's your sense on this um disruption scale?
So this is going to be ultimate disruption you can think of. Uh, we're going to have to coordinate nighttime access to these properties. Uh, the good thing is by relaying the sewer like we are, we're splitting the peninsula and coming down both ways. Therefore, we could do one side at a time. Uh, you know, there's going to be temporary pumping to continue the flows until everything's operational. Obviously, the lift station will probably be dropped in first, so we would have somewhere to go. Uh, but you're still going to have some temporary bypass pumping, but that's just another reason uh why we need to coordinate this early and often because there might be or say a graduation party in there or a birthday party or you and somebody that might want to grow out, so right? But that's why we do this now and early, just like Fifteenth Street. I mean, it's going to be comparable to that. Uh, but the close coordination and knowing all those things, we can write a lot of, write of that stuff in the contracts and specifications. Uh, you know, obviously we're going to have some stricter requirements on this job than we normally do on our local street project. Um, because we can't just come and dig a trench and leave it open, you know, for a said amount of time. And that might be something that we come to an agreement on with the neighborhood on what's practical timeframe for some of that. And then we would spec, expect that within the contract, right? Uh, we might have some individuals in this area that live that have handicap needs. So that's stuff that we would have to incorporate in the project to on temporary access and stuff like that. So that's just all the things that we go into these projects. Uh, you know, the more disturbance that we do in a neighborhood, the more outreach we do with the, the property owners and just being more transparent about the project and the timeframe and the conflicts you'll be dealing with.
And your, your thought is, are those communications that start in here in twenty twenty-one or when, when does that? When, when do, okay.
So what we would do first out here is first we need to get a survey done because some of this roadway might not be ideally located within existing right away. You know, that's things we will find out. Uh, and then do some preliminary looking at some stuff and then really to understand and know how we're going to deal with the stormwater in this area because we have a lot of drainage issues already, just drainage issues. And you know, once we know some of these grades on things and driveways and then this is probably one that, you know, we'll have some either neighborhood meetings out in the field because of whatever restrictions were under place. And that's just fine. That actually works really good in a project like this because then we could walk this area pretty easily in an evening with the residents. Or we might have individual onsite meetings when people are able to make those meetings. Uh, maybe somebody is more available in the morning of a day instead of, you know, or lunchtime or in the evening, you know, whatever we got to do to meet the people in this area to uh talk about what's needed for the ultimate project and the scoping, but you know, it's going to clean that area up. The one listation that sits down in the peninsula and tight area, that goes away. Now they're not going to have to look at that. Uh, and the other tin can, there's two tin cans down here that when we say tin cans, those green metal cans that are all rusted out. So those two will be gone. And then now we'll have actually backup. Uh, they, what do you call it? Backup plugins or the backup for capability?
Good kind of backup, right?
Good backup that could run on a generator.
Yeah, right now, right now neither one of those stations can run up with this power. They don't, they don't have any capability of running on a generator. So that's kind of scary.
So it's, it's a lot of good things that have come out of the project and obviously we're going to be able to touch and improve a lot of the drainage issues that are down there. Uh, but there's going to be three, four months of a lot of transparency and hope we all understand each other.
Yeah, which is all just even more reason to get started sooner and early. So there's plenty of time for everyone to understand timelines and what's the, what, what is the plan?
And the tightest portion of the project in, I would say in regards to access is the shallowest pipe. So you know, that gets put in pretty fast. Uh, and we would work our way back to the north where that new listation would go. And then that's going to get really deep there. But where that lift station goes, there's a, the whoever lives close to that area can either go west or east to get out of there. So construction of the lift station itself isn't going to affect anybody. That'll be a mast of hole. Uh, just to drop down the new uh wet well and stuff like that. But again, that won't affect any traffic because we'll be able to go west or east uh out of that area. And so the deepest stuff is in the area of the less tightness of the congestion of the neighborhood. The shallow pipe is in the area that was probably going to be the hardest access point, but because of shallow, the work goes faster. And then, and another thing I need to bring up too is we need time to do soil borings in here. Because there's potentially uh engineering things we might have to do to stabilize the, the pipe in this type of soils that we're dealing with out in this area. So whether it's improved pipe foundation, which is pretty common, we use at least some sort depth of that anywhere within the city because we have a lot of wet clays. But here we might be dealing with a lot of peats and worst case scenario, some of the pipe has to be engineered to be set on piles. So so that's again, just allows the project schedule to have that construction done in two thousand twenty-two, which makes this grant eligible for that INI grant that we've already submitted. So.
Council, what other questions might we have for Ryan this evening?
Either done.
Yeah.
It's not going to go away.
It's a, it's a project that's been kicked down the road a little bit. So it's time.
Short-term pain for long-term gain. So that's right.
If no one else, go ahead, go ahead, Kelly.
Um, I was going to ask Mayor Bain if she's ready for a motion. I am if you are. Okay. Um, I move to approve the preparation of plans and specs um for bids for the North Shore Circle Street and Utility Project.
I'll second.
A motion from councilmember Munson and a second from councilmember Bystrom. Any further discussion on this? Ryan, I'm just welcome an opportunity for community meetings, any outreach, happy to, happy to send it on those if it's helpful. I know councilmembers would as well. So keep us involved.
Will do.
And Karen, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Husnick.
Aye.
Councilmember Munson.
Aye.
Councilmember Bystrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Valento.
Aye.
And Mayor Bain.
Aye, and motion approved. Our next item on the agenda this evening is item seven D, which is the American Legion Post Fourth of July permits. We have Captain Weiss joining us tonight to walk us through what is being permitted and just to give us an overview of the plans. Um, Captain, I know you've been involved in their planning meetings and so I look forward to hearing from you. Thanks for being here.
Yeah, you bet. Um, I have been probably more involved with the Legion planning this year than years past, for sure. Um, I'm happy to report to uh mayor and council that the Legion is very open and very respective, receptive to any changes that, that we've suggested from a public safety standpoint. Uh, they're not pushing this uh in any way, shape or form to make sure it gets done. They want to do it safely and they want to do it right. Um, the packet that you have in front of you, the permit covers uh a typical Fourth of July parade route. The, all the stuff that we normally do. And that was just to have it in place in case the governor were to start releasing things as we're seeing he's doing. Uh, we have revamped the parade route once. Um, we are meeting again on Thursday and I anticipate probably another suggestion from them looking to me to see if they can go a little bit longer of a route than we have uh initially discussed. I'm not really wanting to disclose the routes because I don't want to put, you know, any false info out there on where the routes are. They're very similar to what we've done in the past. Um, but it's just, uh, uh, they're limiting the amount of uh participants in the parade to invite only uh to keep the numbers down. Um, they are limiting or talked of limiting the carnival uh in the rides for more social distancing and the like. Uh, bingo as well. So uh, we're on board with them. Um, I'm confident that the Legion has the best interest in mind here of uh safety and and uh from a EM standpoint and a police standpoint, I don't see any reason not to approve in the, in the packet, I believe in there I did write or uh it should be probably voted on from council that, you know, final approval has to go through uh the EM or myself uh for this to happen or probably the chief, actually the director. So it, um, yeah, I'm confident and it's been, uh, it's been just fine to work with them for sure.
Thank you, Captain. Um, and so just so to clarify, um, for council's consideration tonight is the approval of the permit and license applications. And I believe we've traditionally also done a fee waiver as part of that approval. Is that correct?
Believe that's what the council has done in the past. It's the only organization I believe that you waive permit fees for uh because of the community event.
If, I think it's in the packet, I may have missed it, is the assumption, I just wanted to confirm that the assumption is, is that the event will be modified based on whatever governor's orders or emergency orders, um, I guess either state or local level would be in place at the time. Is, is that kind of the working assumption of the Legion?
That's correct, yes. And they're also uh very willing to adjust as we get closer to different events coming up in the end of June, you know, with uh civil unrest, things like that. They're, they're bendy, super bendy. And uh they want to get as close to a Fourth of July as we can, uh, but yet keep uh citizens and, and others, you know, that, that joint safe.
Thank you. Members of council, what questions would we have? Would you have this evening? Comments?
Mara, one of the, one of the questions I'd gotten from the Legion folks prior to any of these meetings was, you know, we had always um kind of appropriated money for the fireworks. I think that's still in our budget, correct?
I believe it is in the budget, yeah.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to clarify that because I was sure that we had, we, we had put that in the budget. So I just wanted to make sure that, so I can tell them what's going on, you know?
Yeah, I will double check, but I believe we kept.
All right, thanks.
So will that be a separate discussion item or separate motion then? Or is it just an, I mean,
No, I don't, I don't think so.
automatic expenditure because we have it in the budget.
I think it's already been budgeted, I think. So I don't know that. I mean, I'm not, I don't know that.
Yeah, usually we just, I would expect that we just, it's in the budget and we can make that expenditure based on.
Yeah.
I think in the past it, it just comes up as it's, so it's part of the budget and then the cash, cash dispersment as part of that becomes part of just the cash dispersment register that we ratify every meeting. I'm not sure we've taken additional action, but I guess councilmember Bystrom, if you, or if anybody felt that some, another level of conversation were necessary, I'd be happy to have that on a future agenda or included as part of tonight's discussion if there were some concern around.
Yeah, we just want to make sure so they know where they're at.
Agreed. Yes, I would agree. And Karen, I think you had your hand up.
I was just going to say it, it was already budgeted for, I think it was in twenty nineteen, they came forward and asked for an increase in that fireworks budget. Um, and so they asked for an additional, I believe, two thousand dollars. I think it totaled an additional six thousand dollars. It was two thousand dollars for the next three years. So it went from ten to twelve thousand dollars for the fireworks.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just trying to recollect all of that. Feels like it's such a blur.
Yeah.
I just, all I want to do is clarify to make sure that that was in the budget. You know, we don't have to, we shouldn't have to have that.
What they're asking for tonight is just a, um, a waiver of their license and permitting fees, which is traditionally what has been done. And um Patrick had asked me earlier to collect all that and figure it out. And I believe if Patrick has a total sitting right there, I think it was seven hundred and fifty dollars for all their permitting um and licensing fees. And so that's part of what they're requesting tonight. And then the other part of it is just to approve the license and permits um as they stand and then um, just to make sure that they have everything in place.
So we are, um, so we're at a point of, um, you know, mass vaccine availability and there's more availability than demand, unfortunately. But we're at a spot where there is a great amount of availability. Um, and you know, here we sit at, you know, early May on an event that's still a couple of months away. Um, you know, given the governor's update and you know, really the clear of looking to have, you know, Fourth of July events in a summer that looks closer to normal. Um, I guess I applaud the Legion for continuing with their plans and I appreciate their prudence to recognize that they may have to make a different change of plans based on updated guidance, should that become necessary. But if they're committed to that, I'm comfortable in, in supporting this tonight and um think that they are, I think, I'm thankful that they're um, looking to get back to some sort of community celebration. I think there's a way that we can do it safely. So um, but I also appreciate, it's a lot of work on their part. So um, I want to give them clear guidance tonight. Um, and would like to enthusiastically support their plans, um, given what I've heard. But I'm open to council feedback as well.
No, I agree, Mayor Bain. I just, I think, you know, we, we're, we live in a world where we need to be a little nimble. Um, and things can change or turn on a dime, although they don't feel like they're doing it, doing that like they were. So I'm confident that we'll be able to proceed at some level, but I, I agree. And I believe I heard Captain Weiss say so that they're prepared to make adjustments if they need to based on the governor's guidance or the Minnesota Department of Health guidance.
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and there's certainly a level of risk that comes with any event that, you know, it, we, we don't have the level of certainty that we used to have. And so um, yeah, it's, it's part of what comes with it is we have to be nimble as it's happen or changes happen. Other thoughts um or feedback? Send my blue bead your hand up, go ahead.
Yep, Madam Mayor, uh, based on the conversation we just had, I would uh motion, make a motion that we approve their application for the July fourth uh celebrations, including the uh permit um waive, waiving fees for the permits, I guess. Kind of clumsily said that, but that's what I'm trying to get across here. So.
And I'll second that. We have a motion from councilmember Husnick and a second from councilmember Munson. Um, any further questions, comments? One thing that I, as we're talking that does come to mind, I guess I would just ask a favor of the Legion that they help with communication and that as the event is being, is being promoted, that they include some language that it, that's, that says, you know, plans are based on, you know, up-to-date governor's guidelines. If something were to go poorly and things had to be restricted, I would hate for us or them to have to be in a position of um some immense public pressure to go against governor's guidelines. And if we are committing ourselves to these plans, I'd like to see us also committing to those, following those executive orders of the governor. And we're just asking their favor and, you know, kind of promoting that these plans are preliminary and subject to change based on guidelines and just setting that public expectation.
Mara, I would amend my motion to include the comments you just made about uh, uh, I guess being in line with whatever the governor is going on with in, in the CDC and all the other people involved.
Councilmember Munson.
And I'll second that with the, with the uh, the amendment.
Very good. Any other, any further discussion? Karen, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Husnick.
Aye.
Councilmember Bystrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Munson.
Aye.
Councilmember Valento.
Aye.
And Mayor Bain.
Aye, and motion approved. Our next item this evening is the agricultural lease. And Dan, I believe you're walking us through this?
And uh, may members of the council, uh, before this evening is the agricultural lease renewal for the CBO and land that surrounds the Forest Airport. Uh, just so everybody is aware that the revenues that we do collect from this week are deposited within the airport fund and are used to support airport activities. Uh, earlier this afternoon, um, I did send out an updated version of the lease, uh, which contains some minor edits that were recommended by the city attorney. And I just wanted to make sure everybody is aware of the updated version of the lease. Uh, a couple of the highlights of the lease, this is a five-year lease term, uh, that splits the parcels into two groups. It's group A and group B. Uh, a couple of the highlights of the lease, this is a five year lease term, uh that splits the parcels into two groups, it's group A and group B. Um, the need to split the term has to do with that with the uh parcels contained within the lease. Group A are currently being marketed for development and we do anticipate um that development occurring on the present over the next five years. And we didn't want to be tied into not allowing the parcels to be sold if we had a lease uh on those properties containing them in group A. Um, group B uh follows a standard five year term. And that's the parcel basically immediately following or surrounding the airport. Uh, we have no intention of selling that land, so we put those in a standard. Uh, five year term and that does allow the tenant to make um investments in those fields in terms of the seeds they put down. Um, and how they're for them to recruit uh those investments on the parcels contained within group B. Um, which does strike the balance between both the city and the tenant needs in this lease. Uh, the rates um are one oh five per acre and with an annual two and a half percent increase in the lease terms. Uh, over the five years, uh the requested action tonight is staff is recommending approval of the lease with the changes as approved by the city attorney. I'd be happy to answer any questions that council has regarding the lease.
Thank you, Dan. And council, what questions might we have on the egg lease tonight? Pete, go ahead.
Uh, your honor, members of council, just a brief clarification because it's just putting it in. And we have to get that back and forth with the with the tenant. I would ask that any of these subjects do a minor modification by the city.
Thank you, Pete. Any motion tonight should reference those minor modifications? Any questions on the lease itself? I know this was part of a uh at least a workshop discussion previously as well.
Mayor Bain, I make a motion to approve the egg lease with the uh minor minor modifications as approved by the city attorney.
I'll second. We have a motion from Councilmember Bystrom and a second from Councilmember Valento. Any further discussion this evening? Hearing none, Karen, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Husnick.
Hi.
Councilmember Munson.
Hi.
Councilmember Bystrom.
Hi.
Councilmember Valento.
Hi.
And Mayor Bain.
Hi, motion approved. And our final, a regular agenda item this evening is the accounting manager hiring recommendation and Sandy, I believe you're walking us through this.
Yes, um, a few months ago back, um, we did approve, have the council approve a position called the Accounting and Utility Billing Manager. Um, we have posted for that position and I am pleased to announce that we have a contingent job offer was made to a Sherry Carlson. And and we went through a major uh interview process and a testing process. As well as doing references to um ensure that this is the candidate that we want. And with her experience, she comes from the US District Court. She has governmental accounting experience. Um, loads of project management experience as well as supervision. Um, so with all this um qualifications, we um have. Made that contingent offer and she will be in the MAPS um unit with under grade twelve, step four is what we're proposing. And with that, um, we're asking the council for approval.
Thank you, Sandy. Council, questions for Sandy this evening? Know that we've um talked about this position, we've talked previously about this position, we had some discussion around. Um, you know, kind of level and timing and given the size of the utility billing projects that we have coming up and the transition of moving that in house. Um, I'm happy to, happy to support this hire this evening. And uh that is going to be substantial project. Go ahead, Patrick.
Just to follow up, this was also the second round of, we had to advertise for this twice to get the right person. First time uh we interviewed, we didn't feel we had the right kind of person position, so this was the second round of advertising. Finally, we found somebody that we think is a good candidate to take this.
Council questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the hiring recommendation for accounting manager.
Second.
The motion from Councilmember Valento and a second from Councilmember Bystrom. Any further discussion on tonight's item? All right, Karen, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Husnick.
Hi.
Councilmember Munson.
Hi.
Councilmember Bystrom.
Hi.
Councilmember Valento.
Hi.
And Mayor Bain.
Hey, motion approved. That ends tonight's regular agenda. We do have a workshop item for discussion only tonight for your consideration, council. For anybody watching, workshop items are items of working session of council, but uh formal action is not taken. Um, any items that are discussed tonight that would require formal action that would come back at a future council agenda? Um, with that, the lift station project, um, Ryan, do you want to kick us off?
Here, City Council, tonight, we're just coming early before we even come forward with an authorized plans and specifications for the lift station project. Because we had some success since the last time we did scope this, but there's been some also some changes and additional needs that have uh popped up, so. Where we're at is in the budget, you have four point three million dollars, which we've identified for the two thousand twenty. You know, two twenty-three lift station project, then we knew that we were going to have another one, bigger one after we did even scope the one and sixteen. Uh, and that's where the list of the second round of projects came up, but by knowing that we had that list is also why we've also been on the funding pursuits. And trying to find additional ways to buy down those costs that we were knew about back in two thousand seventeen. So with the four point three million, we were successful, the city staff working with our. Our representatives and obtained one point seven million in the state bonding bill, right? So that could bring us to a total project, a cost of six million dollars. So back with a four point three million project, we had ten lift stations identified that would be in this project. Uh, one of them that's replacing the five and six, you know, that's where a portion of the funding is coming from out of the four point three. But since then, when the project was scoped, some of these stations need probably a little additional work than was originally scoped. But then there's uh several more that probably should be dealt with now uh as issues arise at them. But then there's other stuff that's out in our CIP, you know, is uh out in two thousand twenty-four, we've scoped. The force main replacement part of the Highway ninety-seven project with mint out in two thousand twenty-four. Well, just this last year, uh Public Works has already dealt with four. Brakes on that main because it's so old and fragile that that project can't wait anymore and we need to deal with that now, otherwise. What is it, Dave, twenty, thirty thousand a pop every time you guys go out there?
Oh, yeah, about fifteen thousand dollars a time.
So if that continues, you're just gonna have a bunch of stuff patched here and there, but you know, it doesn't always occur in the ideal time in the summer, it's, you know, colder weather and stuff like that. So that's all those things that we would like to include in the project, so. Why we're reaching out to you guys now is if there's the desire to keep a six million dollar project that's funded right now or. Are you looking to reduce that original budget with the bonding money that we got and only focus in on what we're looking at? So this is one of those projects will probably come back a couple of times because, you know, just upon authorize and plans and specs. We, that might not be the project we come forward with, but we're trying to narrow it to a point that this is what you think is going to be in there. But if we get on the field and we find something that we can do differently, uh, you know, for instance, there's one lift station in here that basically serves. A very few number of homes and we've done a couple of other things over the last several years that were very cost effective compared to our traditional lift station. So once we go on scope, some of that stuff now, we might and look at uh the re-times on the the pumps. We might be able to come in with something that's a lesser of improvement, which is cheaper. But then we might go to another one and we find more things that need to be replaced and that's going to cost more. But having some sense of a direction, obviously a difference between four point three million and six million is a big difference and, you know, scope and projects like that and. What we want to spend our time to go preliminary even look at. Public Works has a list of one, two, three, four, five, five additional lift stations right now and then a whole other and. Another section of force main plus the force main I just mess it mentioned, so there's plenty of work to be done with this project. But we wanted to come to you guys tonight first. Whether we should spend our time in conversations on scoping a project of four point three or stay with the budget that's already been secured at six million. So with that, we'll open up with questions and Dave, if you have anything additional to say before we do that, go ahead.
I'm just ready for uh to answer any questions you guys have.
Yeah, and based on what we did with the bonding bill, the one point seven. I think it's our, I know it's our recommendation to go with the six million dollar plan, we we having our infrastructure continue to. Struggle to keep up with, uh, Ryan just mentioned the number of breaks on the on the line over the winter. I I think we went for the bonding bill to try to do better and get money to do more, and I think that's what we're asking you for.
And the bonding bill was a bit of a hail Mary, right? We had no idea of what type of project would be funded. It wasn't even our first number one priority. We're happy to have it, but um, yeah.
So the city did start the pursuit with your your representatives with the original project. We weren't successful, but we just kept working at it and working on that's, you know, how how you guys got what you got.
Right.
It's a very nice sum of money, but so those that aren't as familiar with this, the system. The number of lift stations we have compared to any community around you is just uh off the charts because when you develop around two lakes like our community has. You lose gravity real fast and then you continue to build around the lake to pick up additional services. Uh, obviously, it's a benefit to the lake because now we don't have individual septic systems. So it's a huge potential water quality, environmental uh thing that's, you know, to the benefit of us. But we just have so many lift stations that were deferred for the longest time. We had stations built in the sixties and seventies and really the city came through in eighteen or two thousand eight, two thousand nine, two thousand twelve. And then now seventeen and eighteen, and then now we're coming in twenty-one and twenty-two. And that'll that'll leave us lift stations. Other than a couple, we're probably dealing with everything that would be two thousand four or newer. So you think about what we've just did in the last. Well, five years is just crazy compared to what the city has done before that. And we've also set ourselves up long term to continue to reduce the number of lift stations, for instance, with the seventeen project. We installed lift station twenty twenty-T. I can't remember the exact depth. It was three or four feet deeper than it was already at. Therefore, we could then, once we redid the cul-de-sac for the road to the east of there, we'd be able to remove the station twenty-nine T entirely. Because we could bring gravity pipe to that new lift station. Also, when we uh have any development north or east of the Hawthorne Heights development existing there, we'll continue gravity pipe up to lift station thirty-two T, which will take that lift station off and out of there. Because we'll be able to run everything gravity wise on how we planned been planning the sewer system long term, so. There are some pros and moving forward in the future on the way things have been set up and the grades and elevations that they were constructed at. We just got this one big hurdle still left to get over, which will, you know, take off the sixties and seventies of lift stations and. Basically be other than, I think it was one or two, then our oldest would be two thousand four.
Ryan, one other question around use of funds, um, and to clarify. Be because we're talking about sewer and water funds, these are dedicated funds and any. If we were to choose to not spend the additional six million dollars, it's not like those project funds can be spent on anything else. It's not like we could. Use that money for EDA purposes or roads or any operations or any other, those are dedicated sewer and water funds that. This is really a question around sewer and waterfront timing, right? Rather than.
We're only talking sanitary sewer too, so.
Okay, yeah, okay.
All these improvements that all these lift stations are eligible eligible to a portion of percent in that INI grant that have been submitted to.
Right.
So hopefully we get some payback on some of that too. But then obviously the grants from the the bonding bill is huge springboard that would help this infrastructure a lot.
Yeah, but to just to further answer the question of the four point three million, that is in the sewer plan. That's what we did the rate study on it included and, you know, we borrowed money for it. Those are dedicated funds for sewer only. You are absolutely correct. We won't be spending it on water or EDA or roads or anything that's sewer money based on them. And we budgeted for that and we've planned for that in the rate structure.
My recommendation is we take a rare opportunity to get a little bit ahead.
Yeah, I, you know, it's it's like putting a Band-Aid on a hemorrhage, you know, you can't, you can't. We we've, we've got the resources to be able to get ahead of it a bit. Um, to to be continuing to make fifteen thousand dollar investments in in repair. You know, in the way of a Band-Aid, doesn't make any sense to me. I I fully support utilizing the, you know, putting adding the one point seven to the four point three and. And investing that six million in necessary projects.
I'm, Mara, I'm on board with that also. It doesn't make sense to put that stuff off. You know, it just gets worse and worse.
And when I say get ahead, it's really, we're less behind than what we thought we were.
And you can't even break.
Not sure Ryan would say we're ahead of anything.
We're trying. I agree, though.
I agree as well.
So our next steps then would be to put a potential list of lift stations and force main runs in a city council letter. Come back to the next meeting to authorize plans and specs for that. But what our first step really is to do is to go from station to station with Public Works to identify ultimately what's needed at each of these sites. And then once we know that and can play around with some budget numbers. Uh, then therefore we would have a pretty dialed in what we should then do our next steps and next steps here would be. Soil borings at each of the stations, uh, and then. Last last project, we had a lot of issues where some of these didn't have any right away or easements around them, so we would have to work through that process too. And then once we know the the final scope of work at each of these areas, that's where we would then come in after the facts to do the preliminary survey. Because if it's simply just some pumps and a top slab and control panels, we don't need to go out and survey that site. If we're, you know, put in a whole brand new structure and gonna have big removals and some construction limits, then we're gonna have to go out and survey some of that stuff, so. You know, by just walking each of the the station sites with Public Works, we'll be able to identify better what the scope of work is needed for this project in twenty twenty-two, construction twenty-three. And then uh. We'd be pretty strict on that budget of six million here where last time where we came in on the lower side and then we're able to add a couple of things to the project with alternative bids. I don't, I don't foresee us being able to do that, um, just because of. We don't know what's out there quite yet, so, you know, we'll have to stay or under that budget of the six million here. Just because of how then have this the sewer plan laid up based on your guys' uh study that was completed.
And so, Council Ryan, Patrick, anything further on this topic? Ryan, from my perspective, your next steps that you outlined makes sense.
It sounds like you all are agreeing that we should move forward down though with the six point six million dollars, so we will continue to go down that road.
For um, heading into budget season, it would be helpful to. I'm not sure, to get some sense on where we sit with the rates that we have taken. We've taken some pretty aggressive rate increases over the last couple of years. We've had some resident feedback over that every quarter when we issue a new bill, we always get a flurry of feedback around what's going on with rates and force like. Um, so for this next budget season, it'd be helpful to just understand where we sit and are we. Are we catching up like we think we should be catching up and how are, how, you know, we've done the water meters and there's just a lot of stuff that's happened with sewer and water. It'd be good to just get some updated sense on. You know, that study was done and before we took a lot of those actions, it'd just be good to get just an update on where we stand. I don't mean to suggest a full rate study, that's, I know it's a lot of work, but whatever we can do to kind of do an update that is accessible would be, I think, helpful. Whatever we can do to kind of do an update that is accessible would be, I think, helpful to that budget process.
Yeah, we'll look at the capital plan and look at what the rates are projected for the next few years and give you an idea of where we're going to go with that.
I think I might have asked for a rate study without telling you a rate study, so shortcut that to what makes sense.
You you don't need a full-blown rate study. You need basically to review what we've done already and. And since uh Ryan and Dave have a pretty good handle on the uh capital improvement side of that, that makes.
Right.
calculation easier.
Perfect. Thank you. Anything else we should consider on this topic? All right, we are at the end of our planned agenda. We will move on to staff updates. Let's start with Patrick and then go to Dan.
Yeah, I just have two things tonight, uh and most of you probably know it already, but the senior center opened today. So it's back in business on a limited basis, but. Uh, I think we've uh turned that around pretty good in the last few weeks here, so happy to report that that's ago and we'll see how. Everything works out, so that's good. And two, we have, we've met with um. The purchasers of the whole property regarding that redevelopment and. That should be coming forward to the plan commission fairly quickly. It's a. The Gertens Nursery people bought that site and are planning to. Add some amenities, pave it, make it look nicer and and I think that's going to be a good project when we finally get to it.
Excellent. Good to hear. Any questions for Patrick this evening? All right, we will move on to Dan.
I just want to update tonight. Uh, cocked with Nutrax, that's the the circulator bus that we have here in the city for the seniors. They're looking at resuming service coming this coming June, so in a couple of weeks from now, they'll be looking to resume service. So one more step towards a return to normalcy here in the city, so. Look for the new track buses to be out in the city here this coming June.
Any questions for Dan this evening? All right, we will move to Chief Peterson and then Chief Newman.
Yeah, Mayor and City Council members, good evening. Uh, the only item I have for you tonight is now that the warmer weather um has arrived in the past few weeks. Residents are coming outside and getting some fresh air, which is fantastic. Unfortunately, with the warmer weather also brings opportunities for criminals to prey on our residents. Last weekend, we observed a few break-ins to the motor vehicles that resulted in thefts and damage. Uh, we've also had a few garage door openers that were unfortunately left in a couple of vehicles that were parked in the driveways. Which allowed these individuals to enter garages and steal items. Um, this is really disturbing news, I understand. But uh our department is working on leads we have received from residents and our officers, officers are in the evenings attempting to locate these individuals. Um, this is not only occurring in Forest Lake, but all over the metro area as well. Um, I just want to take this opportunity, which I usually unfortunately have to do um once or twice every year. To remind our residents to keep valuables out of their vehicles and that includes garage door openers. Keep lights on outside if you can, um which can deter individuals from attempting to commit crimes. Uh, definitely. If you see anything suspicious, don't be afraid to call nine one one so we can respond and check the area. That's what we're here for is to protect you. So definitely call nine one if uh you see anything suspicious. And that's all I have for you tonight and uh if you have any questions for me.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions for Chief this evening? All right, Chief Newman, and then we will go to Captain Weiss. If you have any, Captain Weiss, if you have anything further to add, go ahead, Chief Newman.
Right, I have two updates for tonight. Uh, burning restrictions were lifted on Thursday. Uh, with the lack of moisture in the near uh future for at least the next week. Uh, I would expect that the Minnesota D N R may put burning restrictions back on. Um, if you need a permit, you can get them free of charge from the Forest Lake City Center. Uh, we just ask that you read the permit and follow what the restrictions are for wind direction. Uh, what you can burn and uh burning timeframes as well. The second update that I have is this Thursday at seven P M. We'll have the joint fire board meeting and that is a Zoom meeting. That's all I have for updates.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions for Chief this evening? All right. Captain Weiss, anything further? And we'll go to Pete and Amanda after Captain Weiss.
I have nothing further.
Anything for Captain this evening? All right. Pete and Amanda and we'll go to Ryan after Pete and Amanda.
Your Honor, Council, I have no update for you this evening. Happy to take any questions.
Any questions for Council this evening? All right, Ryan and then Dave.
Mayor City Council, just to comment on a couple of things, uh, staff is meeting with Min Dots on May twenty-six to uh discuss some things preliminary on highway ninety-seven project. Min Dot does plan on coming to uh present or speak with the city council sometime this summer on that project and provide an update on what things are out there. The local street project uh is started started this week, just basically doing some minor removals and sock cutting right now. We're working in the southeast part of the city. And we'll work westward. Uh, so that would then probably put the whole Fifth Avenue project uh after the Fourth of July time period with that project. The double chip seal, as you remember, uh, we got very good bids on that project, so. We've worked with Public Works to add some additional work to that project to stay within the already approved budgets. So you'll see another change order with that project to just simply add additional work that's been outlined by Public Works for that project. Other than that, there's still a lot of activity out there with the whole subdivision work right now, so that's, you know, a favorable thing, obviously, and how fast housing's moving in the the suburbs right now. And then the private work um is continue to move along. Washington County uh is also working, we're probably about thirty percent on plans for Everton Avenue or County Stated Highway thirty-three. They will have to come back, city council, to obtain municipal consent with that project. Some of you guys might be familiar, you went through that process with Min Dot on some of their projects. Uh, anytime you're. Affecting public right of way of the municipality here is that's required, so. They'll be going back at some points for that. I don't know exact timelines. They're working on some of those schedules and then also how should they communicate that to you guys prior to that actual action item requested a a future city council meeting or a workshop. Uh, delivery, so. That's what I have for now. If there's any questions.
Any questions for Ryan? All right, Dave.
Uh, Mayor.
Sandy after Dave.
Sorry, Mayor Council, just uh one update. Uh, there's been some contractor delays that our water plant number two rehab. Um, right now our our filter is shut down for them to do filter work, so we're not able to make water out of that plant. So the plan was that they uh have it running by Memorial Day or Memorial Weekend at maybe in the middle of June. Um, just making you aware of this is kind of like when we did Second Avenue when we hit a shortage of water when it started getting warm out, so. Uh, we continue to monitor um our usage and as we don't get rain, that usage keeps climbing with with irrigation and we were handing out irrigation heaters this week as well. So um just making all of you aware that if we do need to declare a irrigation ban. To protect that wire that you're aware of, that's the reason why that we're not running short of water or we just. Can't produce enough water with with only one plant, so um. Contractors are are back on schedule and they say worst case scenario is middle of June, but if we don't get any rain in the next two, three weeks, we're we can be into some issues too, but. Nothing to instill panic in anybody. We're still capable of making. Almost two and a half million gallons of water a day, but when irrigation starts going, that goes way above that, so. We'll just continue to monitor and and we'll keep you up to date on that. That's all I have.
Thank you for that update, Dave. Council members, any questions for Dave this evening? Dave, if that seems like it's getting close to needing to do an irrigation ban, um. Even if we were to do some sort of a social media post, just voluntary voluntarily requesting limited usage, we might be able to see those numbers come down, so. Kind of consider that if you think it might be appropriate.
Yeah, it's kind of a a touching subject. You want.
I know.
And and all that to start going at the spring. It's kind of different in July when you can knock it off and it's, you know, a hundred degrees out and shouldn't be out there watering anyway, but. So it's kind of a delicate dance we're doing, but well, like I said, unless. Well, but we monitor, you know, we're monitoring twenty-four hours a day and if it starts trending upwards, you know, towards that point where we don't think we can. Keep up, you know, production, then we'll definitely um go that road.
If you see my kids to shut off the water while they're brushing their teeth, I mean, this is where we could start, so. Okay, thanks for the update.
Yeah.
Sandy and then Karen.
Um, I think I just want to add, just because I haven't talked about it for a while, we still are on track with the utility billing system as we keep on going on. We're. We're continuing to implement that system and and working with our finance system to um. To um make sure that things are going to be working when that time comes. You can expect one more quarter from Opus and after that, we are going to be ready to implement through the B S and A system. And so this is a great time to have this position in place as well, because a great time to have that person trained and and get a good process in place, so so thank you for that.
Thank you for that update. Um, any questions for Sandy this evening? All right, Karen, and then we'll move on to council updates.
Thank you, Mayor. And I don't have any updates. If anybody has questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions for Karen this evening? All right, we will move on to council updates and Councilmember Hesnick and then Councilmember Munson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, last Wednesday, I attended the airport commission meeting. And we discussed, of course, Walton and Mick was there. The, we're still working on our. Wish list. We uh trying to get our foot in the door for some funding to add some additional hangers out there. And hopefully we'd be able to um do those projects on a net zero. Cost to the city, so we're working hard on that. Uh, we did discuss the airport budget. However, we didn't have the final numbers because my understanding, or at least Dan can explain that uh. We didn't have the um the final audit done for the city forest lakes, so we didn't have the exact numbers on that. We're working on that. And then uh. There is a tractor out there that's for sale because uh Min Min Dot had helped. Helped us buy that tractor and now we want to uh, we haven't been using it, so now we're going to try to um. Determine a price on and value and all that and get that sold and. Get Min Dot back their money and then the rest of the vehicle back to the airport, so. Those are some things that we talked about, all right? Also, uh, I attended the E D A meeting tonight along with um. Mara Bain, the mayor, and uh. The big thing was the downtown incentive policy review. And of course, the Nutrax that Dan explained and I'll let you take it from there, so uh those are the two items that I. Attended since the last meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hesnick and uh Councilmember Munson.
Short update, um, I attended the planning commission meeting on the twenty-eighth of April. It was actually a very short meeting. They had one item on their agenda and they. Unanimously approved the expansion of the Buick dealership over by Famous Dates. It's a new service bay for electric vehicles.
Very good. Ready.
Yeah.
That's it.
Um, thank you, Councilmember Munson, Councilmember Beistrum, and then Councilmember Valento.
Uh, not much for me, just want to acknowledge some citizen communication around uh the sewer rate hike. Um, and I I just, you know, I ju- I just want to suggest to um city administration that. We do some communication on this periodically, um, you know, even just a note in inside bills. Indicating that this bill includes an annual adjustment or a rate adjust periodic rate adjustment is approved by city council on such and such a date. Maybe a little overview of how we utilize those funds. Um, um, and maybe and a c- an example or two of the way that we've spent those dollars in the last year. Um, some of the work we're doing right now, I think, would be really nice to share out to the community. I think it just. Really helps them understand when they're seeing that, you know, they just think it all goes into some big pot. And then we spend it however we want to spend it and and, you know, there just is, I I think anytime we can. Educate and communicate, I think it just helps us all um. You know, work together better. We do, so just a suggestion on my end.
Thank you, Councilmember Beistrum, Councilmember Valento.
No, no updates for me tonight.
Good, thank you. Just a quick update for me, um, Sam covered our E D A topics of this um from this evening. Um, and then also just wanted to thank Captain or um Chief Peterson and Captain Weiss for the opportunity to speak to the police department. Um, their recent staff update um and other department heads and also welcome the opportunity to do so. It's just a good time to. Thank them for their service and get back together and see some faces again. Um, and uh thank them for a successful year, so um much appreciated. And with that, we are at the end of our planned agenda, and if there is nothing else to come before council, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
I'll second.
Motion. A motion from Councilmember Husnik and a second from Councilmember Valento. Karen, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Husnik.
Hi.
Councilmember Munson.
Hi.
Councilmember Beistrum.
Hi.
Councilmember Valento.
Hi.
And Mayor Bain.
Hi, and we are adjourned. We will see you virtually next week for a workshop and virtually for the next month. We're getting close to the end. Uh, we're almost there, so we are adjourned and thank you, everybody. Have a good night.